We'll call it order tonight's committee of the whole for the Auburn City Council meeting for August the 20th, 2024. The city council should have the minutes from the August 6th committee of the whole. Are there any additions to corrections those minutes? If not, is there a move to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Have motion is second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the minutes are carried forth from August the 6th. Before we move into questions on the agenda, I know that Councilman Griswold has a couple of things he'd like to bring forward, so we'll turn it over to you, Mr. Griswold.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've given each council member a printed copy of this, but just for the record and everything, so that those viewing it can hear what I've got to say, I'll read it. There are two items I'd like the council to consider and decide if they want to staff, want the staff to provide input at the next committee of the whole. The first is the state's recent decision to exempt sales tax, taxes on hearing aids, agricultural fencing, and honeybees. I was unaware of these bills until we received a legislative update from the city manager recently and received an email from a resident who used the Auburn University Speech and Hearing Clinic. The three bills do not affect municipal taxation, but it does ask, beg the question, should we follow the state's lead? I would like the council to direct the city manager to assess the impact if we were to follow the state's lead.
Okay. So why don't we stop with that one, before you go to the next one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure. Okay. Do you have any other follow-up comments to that?
I don't have a dog in that fight, but it's just, we have in the past paid a lot of attention to what the state rules, and since the state saw fit to do this, I thought we should at least ask ourselves if we wanted to do it, that's all.
Sure. Obviously, this is not a time of deliberation, but does anybody have an opinion or a thought on what you've just read here, what Mr. Griswold is proposing? He's proposing that we take time in the future. Committee of the whole to discuss this.
Mayor, if I may.
Sure.
I don't, I don't, I don't think we ought to ask the city manager to do any legwork on it. I think it's pretty simple. On these, these two particular items, I'd be in favor of not taking the taxation away from city taxation. Number one, you're not going to find any place in Auburn that sell agricultural fencing, so I think it'd be very minimal. I don't know if you find any place that sells it. And the hearing aid, I personally have relatives that cannot hear, and the hearing aids are very expensive as it is and things of that nature, so I would certainly be for that now. I do think you have to be careful because it could be a slippery slope you get on that type of stuff, but these two particular items, I would definitely be in favor. There's no tax on that livestock feed already, and this, I don't think is sold in Auburn that I can think of. So I would, I don't, but I don't think we'll put the extra work on. I don't, I don't see how they could look at something and tell us what it would, maybe we can ask Megan tonight.
Sure.
Is there any way you could, could tell what the effect would be on this?
No, sir, there's no way to measure that and, you know, because different companies sell them and the, and we get sales taxes in the aggregate remitted, so it's, it's more if the council wants to do this. To date, the hearing aids, to our knowledge, and there may be more to come, but it's only the city of Madison that has adopted the hearing aid thing. Otherwise, state taxes are, you know, exempted statewide, but not local sales taxes.
I don't see any way you could, could do the research and tell us what it's going to cost us, but I certainly think with those two items, the cost would be minimal to the city. So I think we'll give the citizens a break on that.
Thank you, Chief. Anyone else?
Is there any expectation from the state for us to adopt similar?
In any legislative session, you see a few of these. Often, they're not, there's, sometimes they are statewide issues, but very rarely, to my knowledge, and I'll have our finance director correct me, we have not adopted any such items.
We have not. We see these typically be optional, and we have not adopted anything.
So there are more exemptions perhaps out there than just these ones from this legislative session?
Yep. I would say not, not this legislative session, but a handful of them each legislative session.
I see.
There's often some specific thing that somebody in some district in the state is trying to get at that then gets a bill passed. So it's really ultimately, you know, up to the council. As Councilman Griswold said, it's in your legislative report. He has shared information from one constituent who's asking about hearing aids.
So it's fair to say that there's a substantial number of items that the state exempts?
Yes. Yes.
And we've adopted?
Zero.
We've adopted none of those.
You know, just, I'll remind the council, this past week, we went through our budget. Sales tax represents almost 50% of the revenues that we collect, that we provide services for our community. We do something that is not done, I do not believe, in any other municipality in the state of Alabama, and we give 30% of our largest revenue source to our school system. The municipalities that make these types of decisions, the legislators that represent these municipalities, my guess would be, and I don't have any proof, that his local municipality does not give 30% of their largest revenue source to their school system, which is what we do. And so they make these decisions, ask us all to live by them from a statewide perspective, but certainly how we do business and our culture in Auburn is different than other communities, and I think it's worth remembering that as, as we potentially consider this. I think Chief Dawson is right. Where does this end? I think every year that the, I believe every year that the legislature convenes in Montgomery, there'll be somebody that wants to cut out state sales tax for something. And, you know, again, we are a sales tax government is how we run in Alabama, and so it's just something for us to strongly consider.
Well, Ron, again, I don't intend to deliberate this this evening. I just want to know if there's enough interest in the council for us to look at it in the future. That's, that's my intent.
Go ahead, Tom.
I was just going to say that, that if we were to take this up and we were to look at it, that we'd probably be obliged to also look backwards as, as well, because I'm sure that there are other medical devices or things that are, that are exempt. So that, that actually could be a slippery slope. It may appear today that that is, that that's just hearing aids, but there could be multiple items that are similar in nature that, that if we decided, decided to take on hearing aids, that we might then feel compelled to also include in that. So I think that's something that, that would definitely need to be considered if we took this path.
So my question to the council is, not at a date established right now, we could, Mr. Griswold, would you, would you ask him for the 3rd of September? I think that's our next meeting, right, is September 3rd?
That's correct.
Would you like to, and Megan, is that a reasonable, if the council were to ask the staff to come up with some information, that's two weeks from now, and there's a holiday weekend in between that?
We would not be able, if, if you're talking about what Councilman Adams is talking about, there is not adequate time. We're in the middle of the budgeting process, among other things, and that's not adequate time to research way in the past legislation. Your standard protocol is to discuss it there, and if you want more information, if five of you agree tonight, you want to discuss it another night, is to let that morph into further discussion at that time.
Okay, so if the five of us want to move forward, then we can just establish a date on, for the committee of the whole at some time in the future, once you tell us that you feel like y'all are ready.
And you can talk about it on the 3rd. I'm just saying, our ability to prepare for some things that have been discussed tonight, we will not be ready on the 3rd.
Sure.
Now, let me say this. I'm not advocating having the staff to go do a bunch of research on this. I don't think we should do that. We're spending too much money already, and they're certainly busy enough doing what they do. So if, what are we voting for? Are we voting for the staff to go get a bunch of work? Because I think sometimes we sit up here and ask the staff to do stuff that takes longer than we realize, and it's easy to suffer and ask for it and think it's supposed to happen like that, but it doesn't. So I don't want to put no burden on them than I already have on them, so.
And I don't think that's what Mr. Griswold's asking for. I think he's just asking the staff to open discussion about this, so.
If, if we choose to follow the state's lead on this, is my, my question. And I didn't realize that there might be a lot of other things the state, over time, has stripped out. You know, I know we do a tax-free school thing a couple times, and that doesn't seem to kill us, but again, if, this is in response to an email in particular from a constituent that, that asked if we would look at it.
Okay. So let's just simply say, does the council want to discuss this at the next committee of the whole on September the 3rd? If you're in favor of that, please raise your hand. One, two, three. Did you have your hand up?
Yes, sir.
Four, five. All right, so there's five. So we'll set that up for, for September 3, okay?
Again, that's for just discussion.
Just discussion. We're not asking the staff to do any, any research for us, just to discuss.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Yeah, good. All right, Mr. Griswold, continue.
The second item, in our books that the council gets each week, there's an agenda summary item before each item, and at the bottom of that summary page is a paragraph that says, is this a budgeted item? And to date, we've just said yes or no. If the answer is yes, it would be useful, I believe it'd be useful to all of us, but I know it'd be useful to me, to include a reference as to where in the budget that can be found. And the city manager has sent us an email earlier this week saying that if a majority of the city council would like for me to include this information on each agenda item summary sheet moving forward, I will gladly provide it. So I'd like to see if the council, anybody agrees with me on that, and if we want to discuss it further. I mean, it's, I imagine it's just a couple of keystrokes, but.
Well, I'm kind of like on the other one. I don't see putting the extra work on the staff. I think if you want to know the page and number or whatever, just call the city manager, she could tell you. But I don't think you'd get that many requests for the, I, I know I don't particularly want to see, I feel like I approve the budget. If they say it's been approved, it's always, I, it's good enough for me, but if you want, if you're as a city council, I certainly think you have the right to call and ask the city manager for that particular item. They can research it one time, and they don't have to do it every, every town. They do something like that. I may be wrong.
Anyone else?
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
Please.
What would be the easiest route, should somebody want that information? Would it be to contact you directly, or would it be easier to just include it item by item?
Ultimately, you're talking about their departmental pages. A lot of contracts reside in something like commodities. That's all it's going to show you is commodities, parks and recreation. You know, if you want to know the page of the Parks and Recreation Department, we can do that, but we're asking department, you know, they've got, there's a CIP, Capital Improvement Plan and Capital Outlay Plan, so depending on what it is, it's, it's the same set of page numbers. Things that reside in departmental budgets are not going to show up as an individual line item anyway. So I think it just depends on what you're asking for and when. And then when you get into things like capital improvement plan, you can see that it's in there, but if it's a $32 million budget, there's not a further breakdown, you know, in a lot of subcategories, not, not in the budget document. So it's, depends on what you need and, you know, what your lens is. And so periodically, I get calls from somebody that will say, where is this in the capital improvement plan? And totally fine. I can say that answering that for me to go back, because by the time the agenda goes out, for me to go back and ask nine, answer nine different council members' questions about where this resides in the budget takes me time, I, on, on a weekend or a Monday. And while that's what I'm here for, it helps to know when the majority of the council wants something done, and the majority of the council is then choosing to spend my time on specific items. It just helps me to know what you prefer.
Well, on the items that we have, that we are voting on, the detail is in the agenda packet that we receive. So what additional information are we seeking with this request?
Mr. Griswold.
Want to discuss this now? Continue?
I think just answer her question.
I'd like to know exactly where it is in the budget. We have very little insight into what's actually in the budget, other than the PowerPoint briefing chart from the department heads.
That's not true.
Excuse me, I think I have the floor.
Okay.
Thank you. I think we have very little detail, other than, than the general fund and whatnot. The, so anyway, to me, it'd be very useful to know where these contracts fall. That's the majority of them, maybe contract items. You know, if, if we don't, people don't want to do that, we could ask, pull everything off the consent agenda one after the other and ask for the information each time. I don't see any reason to have to do that. I think it'd be a relatively easy thing to, to pull up, to answer the question, is it in the budget, yes or no, without knowing where it is in the budget. So it should be a very easy thing to, to document.
Anyone else?
We do receive quite a bit of detail in our budget process. We have a very thick binder with lots of numbers, and the presentations that we've had are high-level presentations to demonstrate past activity, and it's an opportunity to ask the question with the detail that you have in front of you. So if we don't take advantage of that time to ask the questions, that's upon us as a council, if we're not asking the questions that there are times that we've had the opportunity to ask them for a point of clarification.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I would, I'd just like to say, I understand where Mr. Griswold is coming from, and I certainly understand him wanting to know, and I think he has a right to know if he wants to know. However, I would like to make it clear that the, I was there for one day, and I got to go back and look at the recording for the second day, but I read my book through and through for the budget meeting, and I was thoroughly impressed with the effort. I mean, that book didn't just jump up and, it didn't just appear out there. It had to be worked on and put in there. And I can tell you from past experience, working on a budget, it is, it's very worrisome, and I lost a lot of sleep over it when I was police chief, because of, of course, back then, we didn't get as much as we probably should have got. I do think, I saw a tremendous amount of work within that budget, and I was thoroughly impressed. I couldn't do it, so. And I know that seems, I believe a lot of y'all, because I can do most anything else, but I, I couldn't, I couldn't have done nothing like that, that kind of work. I just think you should be commended for it, and I, I appreciate the hard work, and I know it's probably a lot of long days getting that prepared. Because one thing about you, when you put it in that book and give it to the city council, it's like, staff, you got to make sure what you're putting there is right. You can't just wing it. I, I was bad about trying to wing it all the time. You can't wing it. You got to have facts correct, and it takes a lot of, lot of effort.
Well, I want to ask a question. You know, if, just say, if there's a question about an item on the agenda, and, like, I guess on the consent agenda is what we're talking about. So if you do have a question about where it's at in the budget, would it be, I mean, is it, would it be a look, I guess, hard if, if the question is asked during the meeting, saying, okay, it says that it's in the budget, so where in the budget is it? So, you know, I mean.
During the meeting, I wouldn't be prepared to answer that on the fly, because we don't carry our budget documents with us to the meeting.
Okay. But you, but you can say something like, well, I can let you know later or something.
Absolutely. What, what I'm saying is in our departmental budgets, because we do not do a line item budget, it's the aggregate of many, like, personal services. The city of Hoover does a spreadsheet before the city council that says each department's personnel costs. Ours resides different and says personal services, that's our personnel cost for every department. That's, that's in an aggregate line item, not each job, but that's in an aggregate line item. It's, it's out there for C, but something like contractual services, somebody like Public Works has a massive amount of contractual services, lots of different building cleaning contracts and, you know, a million and one other things. So anything, you know, if I point you to the Public Works thing, because we have a new cleaning contract, all it's going to say is contractual services and X dollars, and that is in the aggregate for the entire department. I review with each department at nauseam, and they get hard questions, and these people will nod at you. A lot of hard questions, and a lot of things don't make the budget, but I see all those line item things. That's why you have me. And if we say it's in the budget in your binder, it's, it's in the budget. It's just a matter of, I don't want you frustrated by, I send you to a departmental budget that has four items in it. There's four items in the aggregate, and that's all it's going to tell you.
Well, well, and the reason why I was asking my question, because I don't really have a problem with the answer being just yes, you know. So I would, I would just, just want to make sure that, you know, we're not asking somebody to do something that's going to be, like, every item that's listed, that we got to know where in the budget it is. So, you know, I'm not asking because I feel like it's an issue with it. I would just want to know how easy or how hard it would be if the majority of the council decides to do this.
And to your point, you know, you asked during the meeting, we don't have that information. We will get it to you.
I'm satisfied with the information we receive. I personally believe that a council representative needed more information, they needed to dig to the bottom of the well, that the staff would provide that information for them. But I appreciate the work that's gone into our budget. Every time we make a consideration, there's information there that supports that decision, and if we're stuck on it, I am sure that the city manager will try to provide more information to make it clear for our decision-making. But I'm, right now, I'm satisfied.
We're going to have a vote, is where we should hear it again, like, committee of the whole?
We're at, I'm with the discussion.
Yes, sir, you got another question?
Yeah, I do. Firstly, I'd really like to commend Councilman Griswold for the degree that he spends time actually reading the packet. There's been numerous meetings here where he's brought something from digging into the details in a manner that, you know, he's, that's his background, so I can understand how he has such an interest. For me, I view Megan as, I view our role as oversight to our city manager, and I'm not sure that a firefighter out of Ophelika is going to have a lot to contribute to, to the financial bones of this city. That's why I trust the various auditing agencies that, along with council, provide oversight to the way that this city spends their money. That still doesn't take away my impressed feelings for the seriousness that Kelly takes this role.
I agree with that. He does take it very seriously.
Okay.
I've heard that, too. Thank you, Kelly.
Okay. So is the council, if you, if you would like to consider this at a future committee of the whole meeting, and we'll just say September the 3rd, if you'd like to consider this on September the 3rd, to discuss this second item that Mr. Griswold has asked us to consider tonight, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Okay, that's four. Okay, so that fails. Okay. All right. Mr. Mormon?
Mayor, thank you.
Yes, sir.
The staff has been researching the possibility of a sidewalk along East University from Old Mill Road up to East McKinley, and I would like to ask if the city manager is ready to provide a report based on the work the staff has done, and ask if this report can be presented on 17 September.
Yes, and that was just a report on, you know, on the actual impediments, particularly trees at the corner of Old Mill and East University Drive, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, we're ready anytime.
Okay. So is the council okay with us putting this on the September 17th committee of the whole? If you are, please raise your hand. Okay, that's all of us. All right. All right, anyone else? All right. Questions on tonight's agenda for the city manager? Does anybody have any questions on the agenda tonight, the city manager? All right, city manager, anything for us?
Just real quickly, item 10A1 under resolutions has been withdrawn by the applicant. They plan to return to planning commission with a slightly different plan, and they need some time.
Okay. All right.
And I'll remind you when we get there. That's the Auburn Heights House one, conditional use approval request.
Okay.
Call the meeting to order. Are we in the old?
We're still in committee of the whole.
We're still in the committee of the whole. Okay. All right. Anything else for the committee of the whole? It's not, is there a move to adjourn?
So moved.
All right, we are adjourned. At this time, I'll call it a order, tonight's Auburn City Council meeting for August the 20th, 2024. And Lindsay with the roll call.
Adams?
I'm here.
O'Blin?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
Dawson?
Here.
Griswold?
Here.
Mormon?
Here.
Parsons?
Here.
Taylor?
Here.
Witten?
Here.
Andrew?
Here. Which please rise to the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. We recently completed the committee of the whole. There were three items that were discussed, and the end result is on September the 3rd. The city council will have a discussion about recent decisions that were made at the Alabama State Legislature about not collecting sales tax on certain items, and whether the city would want to consider those as well. The city council decided not to carry forth a longer discussion about information provided related to items that we would consider on each agenda that are in the budget. And then the city council decided on September the 17th during the committee of the whole to continue the discussion about the old, the sidewalk at Old Mill and East University Drive. On announcements tonight, I do have a number of things. I want to thank the leadership of the Korean Corner for inviting me Sunday to speak to their youth leadership team, outstanding group of young people who are originally from Korea but are now with us from eighth to 12th grade, and great questions and enthusiastic young people, and it was a good time to be with them. It was also fun to be with the Auburn High School football team and band and cheerleaders and all the junior high teams at the Auburn City Schools pep rally last Friday night. The stadium was basically full, and there was a lot of enthusiasm as Auburn High points towards their first home football game this Friday night against North Miami High School. I want to thank Ms. Fitch for attending the recent groundbreaking for the newest Habitat Home. I was not able to go, but it was a, a great turnout, and I appreciate her representing the city there, and we continue, I continue to be thankful for the work of Habitat Humanity. What a great organization. We recently had another firefighter graduation. What an awesome event to go to. I encourage anybody, if you really want to be encouraged about our, by our future, go watch that graduation, listen to some of the statements that these young people make as the work they have put in to become firefighters. Most of those young people are going to be firefighters with our crew here in Auburn. A number of those were also going to be going to Phoenix City, but a very encouraging time to see our young folks wanting to give themselves to such a vocation to protect all of us. I want to thank Representative Mike Rogers for his recent visit to town, as well as Senator Britt, state leader Dana McCain have both been through Auburn recently, and I've been able to spend time with both of them, and I appreciate their interest in Auburn. I want to congratulate our recent Babe Ruth All-Stars for doing well at the World Series. They didn't win, but they won a number of games, and we're very proud of those young men. They're representing a 13-year-old team. And before we get back together, speaking of football, Auburn will have kicked off their season. I just want to remind our community, five games in a row is certainly exciting, but there'll be certain people that are going to have to work really hard for five straight weekends, and that's the focus in public safety. And I hope that all of us will take time to thank those people who are going to be protecting us for five consecutive weekends. We do look forward to that. It's important to our economy and especially our small businesses. We're grateful for football season, and just five in a row will be a lot, and we'll get through it. Okay? Anyone else on the council have something like?
Mayor, if I may?
Yes, Chief.
I would like to say how much I appreciate the city's employees' work this past Sunday. I don't know about the rest of Auburn, but they got pretty rough on Cox Road and lost a good many trees. But the Public Safety Department was great. They appeared to respond to everything very quickly, and I certainly wouldn't want to They appeared to respond to everything very quickly, and I certainly wouldn't want to be out in that weather working like they were working our public works folks, picking up the trees and getting them out the road. It was an outstanding job, and I really appreciate the work they put into it. So I'd like to commend all the employees that went to work Sunday afternoon.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. I've noticed there's a lot of food trucks around town, and there's one at the library today. There was one at the library today, and there'll be one there tomorrow, I believe. And while I'm on it, I just read that September is get a library card month or something like that, and you register everybody, not just the new cards, but the old cards like this one for drawings. And I would also like to thank and recognize the contribution of the city's first responders, the police, the fire, the EMT. While we calmly live our lives, these people are handling quietly, handling the emergencies that arise all around us, and we just never know about it, and I want to thank them from the bottom of my heart. Ophelika showed their appreciation by hosting a first responders day on 10 August, 10 days ago. The highlight of this day was an axe-throwing competition. That makes some sense, I guess, if you're a firefighter, maybe it might make some sense. These guys are really good at it, I'll say that. The honorable gentleman to my left, who's the head of Ward Six, is really good at. I don't know if you saw this, but he got some really good, can I do this? Some really good publicity on the front page of The Observer because he hit a bullseye. So my hat's off to you.
I'm revisiting my Crocodile Dundee roots.
You are. And so, thank you for your service and good job.
Thank you, Councilman. Appreciate that.
Anyone else? Yes.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to echo the chief's comments. My wife was stuck on Highway 14 when a tree came down in front of her, and it was quickly dispatched, so I appreciate that. Also, I'd like to thank the mayor for providing me the minutes of the Lee Russell Council of Government, the Airport Advisory Board, and the Auburn Research and Technology Foundation. The minutes of those three are very useful for me in helping to look a little bit deeper into the outside agency funding requests, so thank you.
You're welcome. Good. Anyone else?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to thank you, Mayor, for reminding me about the Habitat for Humanity Center Seventh Home that they put up. And it was, I haven't been to all of them because most of the groundbreaking be early in the morning, but just to know that someone from the city of Auburn is there to represent, and you was not able to make it, so I thank you and I appreciate that, but I also appreciate the Habitat for building low to moderate income homes for the families in the area. So, you know, it brought joy to my heart to just even know that, you know, we're still trying to make it affordable for people to live. It was very hot that morning, and I was thinking about passing out, but somebody actually did pass out out there that day. So, you know, it was sort of heartbreaking because it's pretty hot, you know, early in the morning. You wouldn't believe it. You think it is about 90 degrees, and it's like 69, but the weather's like 90 or 100 degrees early in the morning. But, you know, I'm glad she was able to get past that. Her husband or someone had to take her to the hospital, but she actually hit the ground. Yeah, I was on my way up there to hit the ground, and I looked around and she hadn't already hit the ground, so I said, well, you know what, let me just stand up for her. But bless her heart. And the other thing is, on Monday, August the 26th, I will be having a ward meeting at 6:00 PM at the Borckham Community Center, and the public is welcome to attend. Thank you.
Yeah, good, thank you. Anyone else? One thing I failed to mention is the Southeast Apparatus School is in town. They came Sunday, and they're staying until Thursday. There's 413 individuals that are here for a week at the Hotel and Conference Center taking classes and eating in our restaurants, and we're proud to have them here in town. Okay, we're good? All right, Auburn University Communications. Glad to have you all back.
Hey, good evening. Yesterday was the first day of class at Auburn. It is rough to start school back on a Monday, but it is nice to see everyone back on campus and students get in the swing of things. Auburn University Programs Council has their first 56, which is where they plan events for students to look forward to for the first 56 days of classes, so that has started, and they are bringing Ross Lynch, an old Disney Channel star, to The Gooch on Saturday to perform, so I know a lot of students are looking forward to that. That'll be cool. And then Auburn University's SGA has been hosting Auburn Answers on the Concourse this week, allowing students to ask questions about SGA-related things and also not SGA-related things, and just have some help when they are lost, especially those freshmen. Miss Homecoming nominations have been completed, and the top five candidates were announced last night. Campaigning for that will take place September 11th through the 13th, and then the winner will be announced at the Homecoming game against New Mexico on September 14th. And the first football game is next weekend on August 31st against Alabama A&amp;M, and it will be followed by Labor Day where students won't have classes. That's all for today. Thank you, and War Eagle.
Good, War Eagle.
War Eagle.
Thank you. All right, we'll move ahead to citizens communications on items on tonight's agenda. This would only be on items on tonight's agenda. There are a few things that have public hearings attached to those. I would ask that if your item that you would like to speak to does have a public hearing attached, that you wait until that time to speak to the city council. But if you'd like to speak to the city council about anything else on the agenda, we'd ask that you please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. All right, seeing no one, we'll move ahead to city manager's communications.
Mayor, under city manager's communications this evening, we have the announcement of two vacancies on the Industrial Development Board for terms to begin October 10th and end October 9th, 2030. We also have, and I know it's weird to say 2030, we also have one vacancy on the Lee County Youth Development Center Board for a term that begins October 1 and ends September 30th, and one vacancy on the West Pace Village Improvement District Board for a term that begins September 16th and ends September 15th, 2030.
Megan, can I just interrupt you just for a second? I just, in advent of transparency, I just want our community to understand, on the Industrial Development Board, those two terms that are coming up are Dr. Gooch and Dr. Roberts. And having the former president and the current president of Auburn University serving on our Industrial Development Board has been very successful and very important and very strategic, and as far as I know, they both want to serve again. And the Lee County Youth Development Center, that term is Sheriff Jay Jones. And for the important, strategic, sensitive work of the Lee County Youth Development Center, having our county sheriff, who happens to be an Auburn resident, serving on that board has been very strategic and important as well. I would believe that if all three of these men want to continue to serve, that my guess would be that the city council would look favorable upon that. I've not polled anybody, I've not asked anybody, but I just wanted to be honest with our community. Yes, ma'am.
And if I may, the Industrial Development Board appointments will be made on the September 17th agenda, along with the Lee County Youth Development Center, and then the West Pace Village Improvement District is a little bit sooner on September 3rd. Those applications will be open tomorrow morning via our website.
Okay.
So one other item, a business item 10A1 under resolutions has been withdrawn by the applicant, and so I want to remind everybody that only, the only time an applicant can withdraw is if they just don't want it to be considered. And so this applicant looks to make some changes and go back to the Planning Commission, so that's why the request for withdrawal.
Sure, okay.
Are you ready for the consent agenda?
Please.
First item of business is a consent agenda. Does any council member wish to remove an item from the consent agenda and deal with that item individually?
Yes, for me, 8B2.
Any other items?
Anyone else?
Yes, I have one.
Yes, Mr. Mormon?
Item 8 Charlie 1 and 8 Echo.
Okay.
All right.
Anyone else?
Yes, please.
Yeah.
Item 8C3, 8 Charlie 3.
Okay.
Item 8B2 is a request from G A A L F and B LLC doing business as Graduate Hotel for a special retail alcohol beverage license for more than 30 days for property located at 212 West Magnolia Avenue.
Move for approval?
Second.
Okay, I will be abstaining from this. All right, we have a motion second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries.
All right, item 8C1 authorizes a design contract with Davis Architects Incorporated for the Dean Road Recreation Center gymnasium, HVAC, and roof replacement project in the amount of $65,940.
Move for approval.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. I would like to thank the staff for the hard work on this project and for the efforts to make sure the project is done correctly. They will be replacing the existing metal roofing, reinforcing the understructure as necessary, and installing a new heat and air conditioning system, and I am grateful for your work on this project.
Good man. Anyone else? I certainly agree with you, Mr. Mormon. It's going to be a very interesting and important part of our community, that building and programming that goes on there. All right, anyone else? All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8C3 authorizes an infrastructure development agreement with Tim Yates Construction LLC for the Preserve Phase 5.
Move for approval.
Second. Have a motion second. Mr. Griswold?
Thank you. I noticed in this agreement that there are city planned improvements on North Thonahue, Farmville, and also some intersection improvements. I just wanted the public to be aware that the contractor will be contributing to those improvements. I had a question about the roundabout, however. As I read this, it looks like the contractor will, or the developer, will be solely responsible for funding the roundabout at Farmville and Conservation.
That's correct, and it's actually not this developer. It's a developer with the development agreement that is attached in Exhibit D, 68V. And they are, and that is just to clarify, this developer isn't responsible, but you are correct because this has been a longstanding issue. I want to commend Scott Cummings, our Executive Director of Development Services. We've been waiting since 2018 to get aspects of this done in the development agreement, and it is finally memorialized here, and this would finalize probably the last major bit of things that need to be done.
This is the last major one. There was, this will get the balance of Phase 5, 6. There's a little bit of residual in Phases 4 and 6 that Dan Ryan has.
And will the roundabout have to wait on the future phases before it's constructed, or will it get underway soon?
It's tied to the development of Phases 6 and 7. There's a couple of trigger points in the development agreement. I'd have to read back through the development agreement to recall those exactly.
It's not part of Phase 5, then?
It's not part of Phase 5.
Okay.
No, this is memorializing that the developer for Phase 5 is not responsible for that, but this other development agreement that is referenced in here via Resolution 23203 is in Exhibit D. That's just to follow, something I know, trying to give everybody a roadmap.
That answered all my questions. I would like to, once again, state that I don't think it's appropriate for development agreements to be on the consent agenda, but that's up to the city manager and the mayor, I suppose. Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, we've got a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries.
Item 8E authorizes the city of Auburn to make certain expenditures for the design, development, construction, acquisition, and installation of capital improvements for public purposes within the city prior to the issuance of one or more series of tax-exempt general obligation bonds and/or general obligation warrants with principal amount not in excess of approximately $12.5 million for the Lake Wilmore Athletic Fields Project.
Move for approval. Second. Have a motion second. Mr. Mormon?
Yes, sir. This sounds like a financing ordinance, but it really, I mean, I guess it's an ordinance.
It's a resolution.
Resolution, thank you. But it is not. We're not voting on bonds or financing tonight. That's not what we're doing. And it's kind of complicated, so I wanted to point that out. What we're voting on is an accounting, really, and a settling of accounts, and you could probably say that better than I, but we're not approving debt with this. We are transferring funds at most.
Mr. Sir, what we're doing is, this just allows us, we will expend money on the Lake Wilmore Fields Project before we actually issue bonds, and we have been, and so this allows us, as an IRS rule, to reimburse ourselves and for the debt to remain tax-exempt when we do issue it, which you're absolutely accurate. No bond debt has been issued as of yet for either Lake Wilmore, the community center, nor the fields, but we are gearing up to do so.
Any further questions or comments? All right, we have a motion second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And that motion carries. Now, I have a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda.
So moved.
All right, have a motion second. Any further questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion carries. Ordinances.
Under ordinances, item 9A1 is a request from Matthew Chase Parmerella to annex approximately 14.84 acres of property located at 660 Lee Road 25, also known as Hillendale Drive. Planning Commission recommended denial of this request by a vote of 6 to 2 at its August 8 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move to postpone this to a date certain of September 17th.
Okay.
Second.
Do you have a second? All right, we have a motion second to postpone till September 17th. Protocol, be discussion right now?
Correct.
Okay.
Yes, this is, this really applies to these next, all three of these annexations. There was a total of four that went before the Planning Commission, I believe, in the July meeting. All were similarly located outside the optimal boundary. We have yet to have our optimal boundary discussion. I believe that is in the works, hopefully to have prior to the September 17th meeting. And I think it's only fair, as we postponed another annexation to this date, a similar circumstances, I believe it's only fair that we look at all four of these after we've had that discussion. So that's why I'm moving to postpone these to the 17th, and want us to be able to make a decision on that date of yes or no, hopefully that we can move forward on these annexations.
Ms. Crouchy and I talked the last couple of days about setting this meeting up. Do you see any problem with us having this meeting in the near future? I know we've got to work around a holiday weekend coming up, but do you think that is something we can get done here?
Definitely. Staff will make ourselves as available as possible. We've just got to try to get the vast majority of you together for a meeting, and the goal here would be to discuss with Planning Commission as well. I think it would be wise. They haven't, they have seen some of, not only these agenda items, but they have seen some of the proposed changes to optimal boundary and/or had some light discussions, but it's not officially before them for adoption, so we owe you one more joint meeting. So our goal is to have both you and Planning Commission at this meeting so that everybody has the benefit of that discussion.
Okay.
And so it's just going to be up to your calendars and what we can do.
Okay, all right.
And I would ask that hopefully we can all make ourselves available, you know, and I know everybody's got lots going on, but I think this is an important discussion to have, and especially affecting some citizens. Hopefully, we can get that prior to that 17th meeting.
Well, the impact for all of our community is certainly serious and immense, and obviously for these four families, it's acute right now, and so this meeting does need to happen, and I respect where you're coming from, Mr. Oblent. Any other comments? Okay, would this be a voice vote?
Yes, it's fine.
Okay, so we have a motion second to postpone until September the 17th. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, and that motion carries. Do we need to go back through and do this for the next two items as well?
We have to bring them up, and up to you guys. Item 9A2 is a request from Leslie Simonton to annex approximately 5.21 acres of property located at 812 Lee Road 15, also known as Winter Hawk Drive. Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of 2 to 6 at its August 8 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'd like to make a motion to postpone this to a date certain of September 17th.
Second.
All right, have a motion second. Any further comments or questions? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and that motion carries.
Item 9A3 is a request by Justin Shepherd to annex approximately 3.7 acres of property located at 261 Lee Road 415, also known as Winter Hawk Drive. The Planning Commission did not recommend approval of this request by a vote of two to six at its August 8 meeting. Approval of this annexation is contingent on the Simonton property, item 9A2, in order for the applicant to be contiguous to the Auburn City limits. Unanimous consent is necessary.
I'd like to make a motion that we postpone this item to a date certain of September 17th.
Second.
All right, have a motion second, any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and that motion carries.
Item 9B is a request to rezone approximately .89 acres from Neighborhood Conservation 20, also known as NC 20, to Development District Housing, known as DDH, for property located at 900 Anna Brook Drive. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July 8 meeting. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent.
Have a motion of seconds, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? Hearing none, I'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions? Oh, I'm sorry, there was somebody? You want to speak, sir? Okay, I'm gonna reopen the public hearing, I apologize. It's okay, good.
My name is Steve Causey, and I live at 52 Lee Road 2114 Casita, and you probably wonder why I'm here. Well, I'm here to thank Councilman Coblenz. My mother is Jean Causey, and you and my mother have a mutual fan, Ms. Beckwith at South State Banks, and a couple of weeks ago, when she spoke to you, she mentioned that you may try to be at the Envision.
Sir, is this related to this particular topic we're talking about right now?
Oh, I'm sorry, I thought it was like it was last week.
You don't have to cut him off, it's okay.
Oh, I see. Well, if you can wait to the end, I didn't know where you were going, and I've got people looking at me wondering what I'm doing. If you can wait to the end, I certainly want you to say nice things about Mr. Coblenz, so.
I thought we were already here.
But if you can wait to the end.
I'm sorry.
No, it's no problem, okay, thank you.
Thank you in advance. You think, I don't know.
You'll get your moment in the light in a minute, Mr. Coblenz, just hold on. All right, so now I'm gonna reclose the public hearing. All right, sorry about that, folks. Is there any comments or questions related to this?
I got a few questions.
Sure, okay, yeah, you were gonna get recognized whether we liked it or not, weren't you?
That's right. There's a little bit of history on this particular lot. It's a split zone lot, little bit of an interesting dynamic here. It's in Sugar Creek, you got DDH zoning on two, a little over two acres, you got NC 20 on the other. Is there a little history on how maybe this came about, or can you provide a little historical context for us?
Yeah, certainly. So this was, this used to be a large lot, just single-family home that burned down, and when it burned down, there was conversations about rebuilding back, and there were multiple iterations about where it was going to be rebuilt, and so there were a lot of conversations from the applicant with the community and the HOAs about what they were going to rebuild, and there were several iterations, because their first iterations did not go well, and they were explicitly told that what they initially proposed was not gonna work, and there was a lot of hostility. And so through a lot of those conversations, they came up with a solution that was amenable to the community, and the rezoning was a part of that. And so I guess just kind of from a zoning standpoint, it was split zoned, and it was really just as a result of the two zones that are there, the NC 20 and the DDH, the density that was built in this DDH, it was more compliant with NC 20, so it was, you really couldn't tell like what the zoning was, just because of the density, it was all the same, just because it was a large lot development. So with the being burned down, and them opting to rebuild it, and them working with the community to come up with a design that was amenable to the entire community, that is why they came forth with the rezoning and this conditional use that was supported by the Planning Commission and staff.
Real quick, in 1988 is where we got the split zoning. That resides in the staff memo, and that was a result of an application to rezone different things, and it ended up split, NC 20. Part went NC 20 and a part of a bigger parcel went, large part went DDH, and so, I mean, this is something that was inherited
Okay.
over time, and we adopted the zoning ordinance in 84, so this didn't fall far past that, where it ended up getting split up from Merle to both NC 20 and DDH. Scott.
I was just gonna add too, that the .89 acres that are being considered for rezoning that was in the original Sugar Creek Estates subdivision, and the balance of that property was bought by the previous owner for the total of three acres.
Okay. So was that part of the Moore's Mill, Old Moore's Mill part at some point, or was it?
It was a part of the property that would eventually become Moore's Mill subdivision, PDD.
As far as density is concerned, rezoning this from NC 20 to DDH, how much more is allowable from a density standpoint?
Yeah, so what's proposed is, I think it's about like 2.6, and what's allowed in DDH is 5.5. And so, like I was saying, so from the surrounding density of the half-acre lots to the size of lots in the existing DDH zoning, there really wasn't much of a difference. And so they could go much denser, like I said, I mean, three units an acre denser, and they're opting not to do that.
One quick thing with that, though, of note is then to subdivide that if they're not doing a multi-unit development. I mean, you've got a rezoning before you, but they also have to subdivide off of a public right-of-way if they don't do this. So what you're seeing in a conditional use coming up shows a private drive, and in essence, you've got all single-family detached houses, but that allows, the multi-unit development's gonna allow them to deal with a private drive and a few other things that allow the property to be utilized, but to keep the density lower than they would be allowed to do in DDH. It would be very hard to subdivide it at five and a half units an acre and get access to a public street, all in the same accord.
What would, how could, could that happen, I guess, or is that a possibility that could happen?
No, not with this property. So one of the limiting factors in density when it comes to the dwelling units an acre you can get oftentimes is road frontage, and so that's the reason that this configuration has a private street that goes through it and allows them to subdivide off of that, instead of subdividing off of Lauren Lane or Anna Brook, they wouldn't be able to meet the lot frontage requirement to get that density.
So lot frontage is, you've gotta have a minimum width on a public street.
That subdivision, I guess subdivision regulation that prohibits that, I guess.
Yep, correct.
Is that something the Planning Commission could issue a waiver for if requested?
Not on the, currently that'd have to go to BZA.
That'd have to go to BZA. It's not a subdivision regulation issue, it's a zoning ordinance issue.
Yeah, yeah, because they're tied, they're coupled.
Okay. You know, I think the developer has worked hand-in-hand with the neighborhood, from what I understand on this, as Mr. Cotton has recommended. I do support this, I do think this is a project that fits with the character of the neighborhood, what they, is currently there, lot sizes, houses. But, you know, there's no way for us to obviously guarantee that this exact project's gonna be built here, and I certainly am hoping with the, working with, that their relationship with the neighborhood and what all has been presented will be presented. I just wanna ensure, and I wanna get on public record, that I'm supporting this based on what has been presented and further down in the conditional use. This is in character with the neighborhood, and that what's been presented is what will be here, and so I just want that to be recorded and acknowledged, and would ask even the developer commit to writing a letter that will commit to doing this exact development, including in the minutes of this, in this meeting. I would prefer that as part of my support for this project. I think the neighborhood overall has had meetings, they support it, from what I understand, they voted pretty heavily in favor of what's being presented, so I think overall, I'm good. I just want everyone to understand, with this rezoning, you're getting something that could be more dense. I think it would be hard without coming back before this body or another body to change this, but there is that possibility out there, and I just want that to be acknowledged before this body, so that's all I have for this.
Anyone else?
Is this, this Sugar, what is this, Sugar Creek subdivision? Where is this?
Off of Hamilton and Moore's Mill, really more off of Hamilton Road is the entrance that were kind of across from Publix.
Oh, okay.
It abuts the Moore's Mill subdivision as well.
Oh, okay. I was just wondering where it was located at.
Any further, yes?
As Mr. Coblenz just pointed out, what we'll be doing in the next minute or two is voting on rezoning. We're not voting on conditional use till we get over in resolutions.
That's correct.
Correct.
We've kind of discussed both of them here, but we're looking at the .89 acres, and we're rezoning it to DDH. And there will just, to restate what Mr. Coblenz did, there is no PDD here, there is no.
It's not eligible because it's not 10 acres in size.
Right. So I just want to reiterate that point and clarify what we're voting on.
Anyone else? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
You're sorry. Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Item 9C is a request from Fiber Utility Network Incorporated for the city to grant a non-exclusive franchise agreement to construct, operate, and maintain a fiber network in the City of Auburn. Unanimous consent is necessary and a public hearing is required.
I'll introduce the ordinance and ask for unanimous consent. Second.
Have a motion of seconds, anyone on the council have a problem moving forward with a vote on this this evening? All right, seeing a hearing none, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have five minutes. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. I'm Jerry Miss, CEO of Fiber Utility Network, Alabama Fiber Network. We are currently building into all the rural counties of the state of Alabama under Governor's new initiative, and currently we're seeking a 3.9 mile access into Auburn to get to a hub point here, so we can get back to Atlanta and serve those other counties. Our growth in Auburn, well, Auburn is served. Lee County is pretty well covered with fiber and access to high-speed data. Unfortunately, other counties south and west of Lee County are not, and we really would like that consent to operate this and get that permits for that first initial build, because we're in a 30-month construction project to build 6,600 miles of network before the money could possibly go away. So we're under a really short timeline, and we really appreciate any time or effort you can tonight, and if we have any other questions, I'll be glad to answer them, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you very much. If we have any questions for you, we'll let you know. We appreciate you, thank you, good to meet you. Anyone else? Public hearing? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. Does the council have any questions, comments? Okay, Lindsey with the roll call.
Parsons?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Whitten?
Yes.
Adams?
Yes.
Coblenz?
Yes, ma'am.
Dawson?
Yes, ma'am.
Griswold?
Yes, ma'am.
Mormon?
Yes, ma'am.
Anders?
Yes.
Under resolutions, item 10A1 has been removed from the agenda or withdrawn at the applicant's request. Item 10A2 is a request for conditional use approval of a performance residential development, multi-unit development for property located at 900 Anna Brook Drive in the Development District Housing Zoning District. The Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of this request at its July 8 meeting. A public hearing is required.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, have a motion in a second. At this time, we'll open the public hearing. If you'd like to address the city council, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you'll have five minutes to speak to the council. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the council?
Again, I reiterate, this is the plan that's kind of going with that rezoning, eight single-family homes. It's a multi, it's called a multi-unit development because of, it's a single-platted lot, from what I understand, it's a condo, land condo type situation, so it's not truly a multi-unit development, what I think most of the public would understand that to be. So it's eight single-family homes that'll be on this, and I support it based on the plan that's presented here. I did want to ask the applicant, I think there was some conversations with the neighborhood, what type of agreement, if there was an agreement that was signed with the neighborhood, is there something that's legally binding in those that would allow us to, that ensures this plan is kind of what they have, will get?
Yeah, Brett Baschel with the Forsyth Group, representing applicant. Yeah, we do have a signed agreement with the neighborhood. There's actually, as mentioned, the .89 acre piece that is, that was rezoned from NC 20 is part of the Sugar Creek Estate. So essentially, what we agreed to was that our whole, this whole property will be part of the Sugar Creek Homeowners Association. It will be governed by their Architectural Review Committee, and then they did an amendment to bring this in and to essentially, essentially this layout that we're providing is what they're agreeing to, and that's what we agreed to on paper, that we would do this development or, you know, this layout. So this is essentially, we're tied on that side with them
Okay.
on that side as well. And then, you know, from my perspective, is we're getting conditional use approval for this. If we tried to come in and do this differently, right, it would change our conditional use that would require. So if we tried to attach them, right, or, I mean, if we did less units, we wouldn't have to come back before you, but if we tried to do, add more units, attach them, anything substantially different, it's kind of up to the planning director's discretion, but we would be back before Planning Commission and you guys if we tried to do anything differently. So we're kind of, we're kind of tied on both ends, that we pretty much have to deliver what's on paper there to you guys.
Good enough.
Thank you, Mr. Baschel. Okay. Any other comments or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and that motion carries.
Item 10B authorizes consolidating all existing contracts and executing a new five-year master contract with Axon Enterprise Incorporated for the continued purchase of integrated systems comprised of in-car cameras, body-worn cameras, camera-equipped tasers, virtual reality training simulator, digital evidence management, live view capabilities, and cloud storage for digital evidence for the Auburn Police Department. The contract will be paid in five annual installments of $530,783 in the first year and $680,803 per year for the next four years for a grand total of $3.25 million.
Move for approval. Second.
All right, have a motion second, any comments or questions?
Director Matthews, could you give us a brief overview of how this contract operates? It's a five-year agreement, appears for purchase of items as well as services.
That's correct. So this actually terminates the last year of our current five-year agreement and renews a new five-year agreement. We were able to negotiate some benefits in renewing the contract, like extending the warranty of the current equipment that we have that's about to expire, and in doing this, we are getting refreshed equipment, a lot of it's, you know, equipment that we're already using, some of it's new equipment, the new versions of the equipment, and related services. So again, it's in-car cameras, body-worn cameras, tasers, training simulators, the cloud services that hold all of that video evidence, and the ability to remote into those cameras with the officers that are out in the field, so I could sit at my desk and actually live view that camera if they're in a critical incident.
And those, that is estimated over a five-year period?
Correct. The way that they structured it for us at our request was for the first year, which will be taking the place of our last year of the current contract, that's why the prices are different for that first year, so that's within our budgeted funds for this service and equipment, and then the last four years are evenly spaced. Within those future years, contracts, we built in what we expect to purchase as expansion equipment. If we don't end up purchasing that equipment, then that amount would be removed from the contract. We won't have to pay for things that we don't receive.
Perfect, thank you.
Any other comments or questions?
Sir, I would like, I know your background, just put us at the top, video equipment and things of that nature.
I personally think so. You know, we vetted several different video systems through the years. This is by far the highest level, best performing, most reliable system that we've ever had, and, you know, large departments all over the country utilize this same service.
Thank you. Thank you, chief, good question. Anybody else? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and that motion carries.
Mayor, those are all the items of business we have for you this evening.
Okay. At this time, we'll open the citizens' open forum. If you'd like to address the city council about anything, please come forward and give us your name and address for the record, and you will have three minutes. Mr. Causey, since you have already come once, I'm gonna let you be first, okay? It's okay. Don't forget what you said, 'cause Max is waiting on it.
I wanna thank you, sir, 'cause, uh, my mother, um, like I said, y'all have a mutual friend, and, uh, Ms. Beck was said that, uh, you said you probably wanna try to be at the, at the InVision meeting next week to talk about the homeless situation here in Lee County. And my mother called me before, a little bit earlier today, and she just couldn't be here. And so, I said, I'll, I'll go, I'll go. And so, you have to understand, my mo- my mother's older than all of us, so a younger person still has an interest in helping, she gets excited. And, uh, I just wanna tell you thank you, and it's a good time because she has hired a gentleman named Micah Messer from Smith Station, and he's gonna create a high-quality video talking about the homeless situation here in Lee County. And they begin shooting tomorrow in Oak Black with Mary Gary Fuller. And we'll be beginning update next Wednesday at the Invision, at the Invision meeting. And hopefully, we'll get time, maybe time a few minutes to talk after the meeting is over with.
Great.
At twelve o'clock, if I can, if you do come there, best place to park is in the new, in the parking lot of the new library.
Okay.
Don't get caught up in a small parking lot over on the side.
Great, great. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you. No, thank you for being patient. Come back anytime. Okay, who'll be next? Yes, ma'am.
I'd have to bet that Ms. Shamp did bring something for me to view, and it's a visual that she's not able to show tonight by our policy, but I did put it in the hallway. A number of you saw it before the meeting, and so, we'll give that back to her post-meeting.
Okay, sure.
Martha Shamp, three oh seven Camellia Drive. I hope y'all will view that sad but necessary poster. A picture's worth a thousand words and reveals the horrors that are in the books and some, some of the books in the library. Matthew nineteen four said, "Our Lord Jesus Christ says, haven't you read that He who made, made them at the beginning, made them male and female? Thus, Christ declares sex is binary." Dr. Miriam Grossman, a child psychiatrist, she's written two books, says the same thing. Sex is binary. And the lies started about fifteen years ago that it's not. These lies, according to Grossman, destabilize the minds of children. And she says maleness and females is at the core of our identity, so agrees pediatrician Dr. David Perry and hundreds of other medical doctors of the American College of Pediatrics. I was at the library, and more and more ugly books are in the children's wing, lying about sex being binary. Here's one. Love Makes a Family. All these are in the children's wing. It's full of homosexual couples. Here's a book, The Big Book of Pride Flags. It's got trash like gay men, bisexual, gender fluid, gender queer, intersex, non-binary, lesbian, pansexual, polysexual, in the children's wing. Here's a book that they've wasted more money on. Sex is a funny word. Shows someone touching themselves in the bathtub, encouraging that, for children. Here's a book, Pink is for Boys. Here's a book, Love Without Bounds. Shows a lesbian couple with kids, and it's full of filth. Here's a book, LGBT Families. It's Okay to Be Me. Of course, there's a fairy on the cover, a male homosexual. Then there's a book, People of Pride, LGBT Americans Celebrating Sodomy and the Homosexual Vice. And a book, Be Amazing, A History of Pride. On the cover is a homosexual boy wearing makeup and glitter. Wrong, wrong, wrong. This will not be blessed. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Who'll be next? Yes, sir.
My name is Win Timberlake, and I live at two one three Lee Drive. I'm coming up here to speak on, uh, in addition to Martha, on some of the content that's viewable in the library. I, when I went to the teens' nonfiction section in the library, nearly twenty-five percent of the books over there were either homosexual propaganda or mental health books that were not appropriate for teenagers to read. Teenagers are not stable in, in general, so it's not good for them to read material that will convince them that they might be more unstable than they actually are. Secondly, I mean, as you may be aware, there was a recent controversy that happened at Drake Middle School where a drag queen groomer was caught by parents and was, you know, resigned after an outcry of parents. And this is, this is a, it, it, this is a very concerning pattern that's starting to emerge in our town. And it's beginning to affect the safety of our children and the integrity of, of their education and where, and where, and, and the material they can get to teach, to where they can learn in, in environments that they shouldn't be exposed to this in. So, I just want y'all to take a, actually like take a notice to this, and if you haven't gone to the library to actually look at what's there, go there. I mean, she's not making this up. I mean, it's, it's worse than you think it is. It's not like one or two bugs. It's honestly nearly a quarter of all the teens' nonfiction material. This isn't just out there. It's like that, that's what it is. That's how bad it is. All right, thank you.
Yes, sir. Who'll be next?
Hi, Carrie Hill. Live at seven sixteen East Thatch Avenue. Just a quick point of correction on, um, you know, questioning the gender binary versus it being a spectrum. Actually, a lot of research has gone into that, and it hasn't been in just the last fifteen years. In fact, in nineteen nineteen, the Institute for Sexual Research in Berlin was founded. And if it had not been broken into and had all of its books and research burned by literal Nazis, it would be over a century old at this point. So, just a quick note on actual history. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next?
Hello, I'm Deborah Beal, eight oh two Toluhamah Drive. And I was at the library this morning at the library board meeting, and I'd like to share with you a couple of interesting and exciting things that are going on. One is that they, they talked about the teen advisory board that they've developed since COVID to try and reengage, uh, young people in the library. And what is going on, they also provide advice to the people in the library about how to do that. And these are all students in Auburn, and they're from seventh grade through twelfth grade. And they go, and they do a lot of volunteer hours. I can't remember how many thousands of volunteer hours they, they're doing. But they usually get, uh, credit towards whatever organization they are involved in that needs credit hours and volunteers for that kind of thing. It was really interesting to hear about. They also, we got to see the, uh, not technically called a bookmobile, I don't think, but the, the money that you all put out there last year to, to get this, uh, piece of equipment for the library to extend their services to daycares and to retirement homes that, uh, will provide services and books to children and, and older adults in the area. It's, uh, almost ready to get up and running. They've hired two part-time people, and they're training them for a month. And then, hopefully, they'll get out to the first eight places that have been chosen. So, I wanted to give you that good news about the library. Thank you.
Thank you. Who'll be next? Okay, we'll close citizens' open forum. Does anyone in the council have anything they'd like to say?
Yeah, Mayor, I'd like to. Go ahead, Bob. I'm sorry.
Yeah, Hero.
Uh, I.
Hold on, just one. I don't know who spoke first, so.
Go ahead, Tommy.
You're welcome. No, go ahead.
Go ahead, Con.
I, I just wanna, uh, just say, um, during my announcements, I was planning on doing two thank yous. And, uh, I, I just wanna thank Katrina Cook and Dan Ballard for addressing the issue about the fox and the bushes on William Street. So, I appreciate y'all, and I, my answer with the fox, I, it ain't what I wanted, but hey, it is what it is. But thank y'all for addressing it.
I can't wait to hear the rest of this story, Connie.
Mayor, if, if I may, there's one, one other update. The city engineer got to me at the start of the meeting, and it is a miracle, but the poles for Highway fourteen, Martin Luther King Drive, will arrive at the end of September and be installed shortly thereafter. So, at least we have a ship date.
Okay, that's good. We might have to go throw some toilet paper out there. All right, Chief, you're next.
Megan, uh, is my right, is nothing we can do about these books in the library? Is that correct?
I mean, that's a very complicated topic, but in essence, that the council does not select content in the library. That's up to the library board and under their purview.
I would certainly hope it's not increasing the, these type books, on what I saw out there in the hallway. But I, again, think the best solution to it is parents, don't allow your child to go in there if you, if you feel that way about it. I wouldn't allow my child to go in there. It's my right to raise my child as expected. Well, she's thirty-one years old now, so that's up to her now. But my grandkids, I would not allow to be in there if I had anything to do with it. So, I think that's the, uh, I think everyone has, this is America, you have the right to live your life like you want to. I had to govern, to anyhow do it, but I, what I've seen, if, if it's in that library, I would not allow my child to go in there unattended.
Okay. Mr. Parsons, I believe, you want to speak?
Chief, you're absolutely right. This is America, and you can do as you choose. Ms. Shamp just seems to just not understand that this is a large community, and there are a variety of different people living their lives. And, you know, I love, I love to come to council and work on things like giveaway signs and, and new subdivisions. There's this insistence from the public to, uh, bring larger politic, politics to the community. For example, this, this, this item that Ms. Shamp brought, it has some graphic pictures, some illustrations of genitalia that you would find in a book. But the, the, the presentation that Ms. Shamp is attempting is to put it in your face without you choosing to have it put in your face, rather, and in a, in a, in a book form, if somebody chooses to seek information relevant to their interests, they have every right to do so in a community. Like in, in this, in, in, in any American community, that, that a large diverse population, you are going to find diverse interests and diverse people. The gentleman who spoke about a teacher in our school system and, uh, used such a flippant description of him as being a groomer, it leaves me speechless that you have the, 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 the confidence to come up here and accuse an individual in our city, a teacher who has taught all of my children, a fantastic, a, a jewel of a person, who has every right to conduct themselves professionally as he always did in the school setting. This individual completely understands his role as a teacher, and he, he understands completely the separation of his role as a teacher and his private life. I would, my sons, all of them have been with this, this teacher, and I'm so thankful that they have been. It is stunning to me that you can say that with such disregard, and, and I guarantee you, you have not met that person. So, it's, it's a very sad situation that, that this is the, the type of, uh, public commentary that this body, uh, listens to. Sure, you're free to do it, but my goodness, my goodness.
Anyone else?
I would just say, as we end here, that tonight, we, we talked about a couple of new businesses opening and some new events happening on campus. A renovation and really a new life for our old, uh, Parks and Rec Center on Dean Road. A company that wants to lay fiber in Auburn. New equipment for our police officers to protect us better. A reimbursement plan for a great new community center so we can get ahead and get the work done as quick as possible. I just don't want people to forget the work that was done here at city council tonight, approving a new small neighborhood. We've done some things that, um, is what we're asked to do on our agenda every other week, and those are some good things that came out of this meeting here tonight. Okay? Is there a move to adjourn?
Is there a move?
We adjourn.